Six, sir.
I'd like to call the meeting to order for regular meeting of City Council January 22, 2024. Before we get started, I have a sad announcement. You know, Steven Berg, who was on City Council for four years and also ran for mayor a year ago, he and his wife, Jenny, their daughter, died this morning after battling lung illness. So our lots and prayers are with them today. First order of business is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to do the like of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Waznia.
Here.
Wilms.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Hansel.
Here.
And Mr. V.
Here. For citizen input, we don't have anyone who signed up today. Next matter would be council member reply. We don't get reply, no comments. Next matter is action on minutes, minutes of the regular meeting for December 18, 2023. Oh, okay.
I'd like to make motion per second.
That was Mr. Fowler, Mr. Hansel. Roll call.
Councilmembers Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes. Abstain. Waznia.
Yes.
Wilms.
Scottsdale.
And Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carrying four, zero, two abstains. Next matter is financial reports. We have the financial report through the period ending November 30, 2023, and it's available on our website. And it's been pretty consistent with what we've done lately. The operating revenues were up 10.8% over the prior year. Economy sales taxes up 11.8% over the prior year. City sales taxes up 4.9% over the prior year. Property tax revenue was up 11.5% over the prior year. And the operating expenses were 1.7 million less than budget, so we're in good shape. The operating expenses were 15.7 million and the revenue was 20.6 million. So we continue to feel good about our financial position. It's been pretty consistent, actually, over the last few months. Next matter on the agenda is, yes?
We're under reports here, and I guess I would like to like to thank and acknowledge the community services director, Doug Taff, for the report that he gave to the work session. That was informative and appreciated to have that. It was a good overview of what the challenges were and the workloads that they have in 2023. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Next matter is the election of the mayor pro temp, and anyone can nominate themselves or someone else from the council.
Mr. Fowler, I'd like to recommend Doug Fowler.
Okay.
Nomination.
Nomination.
I think Ms. Hughes or Mr. Hansel, either one of the members would be excellent candidates for the mayor pro temp. So I'll nominate Ms. Hughes.
Okay. Do you have any other nominations? Okay.
Okay, so roll call, when your name is called, just indicate your choice. We can follow where you used.
Councilmembers Snow.
I'm sorry.
Give it to both.
Which?
Just say Ms. Hughes or Mr. Fowler.
Oh, call. Okay, Ms. Hughes.
Councilmember Hughes. Fowler. Waznia.
Fowler.
Wilms.
Mr. Fowler.
Fowler.
Doug Fowler.
Hansel.
Fowler.
That's five for Mr. Fowler and one for Ms. Hughes.
Okay, Mr. Fowler selected mayor pro temp for 2024. I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order and procedure to allow all ordinance citizens on the agenda to be read by title only.
So move, say.
That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Waznia. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow. Councilmember Snow, we're on a motion to suspend the rules.
Yes.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Waznia.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Motion carrying five to one, or is it six to zero?
Six to zero.
Six to zero, sorry. Now we're on new business, and unless there's an objection, I've had a request to move item H, which is a resolution, and take that first. So...
We need to make a motion, is that right, Mr. Keller? Or can we just write it?
Uh, H is a...
No. So I talked to the mayor about this, but I don't think we've done this before. Your agenda has an order of business, and so we take all new business at one time. If there's nothing in the rules about the order, we suppose these basic items are taken. And so we're only taking the order that they're on the agenda. And so what I told the mayor, as there is no rule, how little we have custom precedent on this would be to ask if there's any objection to do it, and then just go ahead with that out first. If, I guess, if there were to be objection, then we'd need to proceed with some sort of motion to suspend and alter the agenda in some way.
I'd make a motion to move item H and new business to the end of the line. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, yeah. He doesn't think we need a motion.
Oh.
We need to do it.
That's...
Only person objection.
That's my recommendation. You have no rule, custom practice, procedural precedent regarding this matter.
Okay, let me read item H. Approving the appointment of Kim Hansel to the remainder of an unexpired five-year term on the public library rights report in the December 31, 2025, replacing Ashley Jones. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That's Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler.
I don't have a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Chair. I saw the kind of summary resume of Ms. Hansel. I was quite impressed. Looking forward to her addition to the to the library report.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Waznia.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
And Hansel.
Or Hughes.
So that was five to zero with one recusal. So...
That counts as an abstention.
Oh, abstention. Okay, one abstention. Thank you. Well, congratulations, Kim.
Thank you.
Now we'll go to the top of the agenda. The ordinance A is amending section 107 and 342, retaining wall placement of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Elveston to modify certain requirements regarding retaining wall setbacks from property lines and regarding terrace retaining walls declaring an emergency and for other purposes. And Taylor Robertson is here. She can discuss this since a couple people missed the work session last week.
Okay. At the request of our staff of planning and engineering, we are proposing to amend the code so that these new flatter driveways that we're requiring now have a new driveway grade requirement. They need to stabilize, and due to normally a lot of the narrow lots we have here, the toe, the slope setback that we have, it's hard to achieve. And so retain walls are being used to achieve those flatter driveways. However, we have setbacks for retain walls, and it came within that front utility easement or 7.5 feet from the front property line. And so what's happening is it's causing a gap from the front property line to where the wall starts, where cars could back out and possibly fall over. Same thing with pedestrians. And so staff would like to propose to get driveway walls to be to the front property line, so that way driveways, AKA houses and garages, are safer to access for homes. And the second amendment is basically codifying common practice with terracing. Our current code only stipulates that walls need to be at least one times the height of the tallest wall from each other. However, there's a really common practice with wall terracing that they must, or if the walls are less than two times the height of the lower wall, that they are considered one wall to account for the load that is being held between the two walls. So we basically apply that common practice now, but it's a little bit lacking on the teeth because it's not codified. It's just the best practice, common practice. And so we're wanting to give a little teeth to help achieve safer walls, so that way we don't have two, two and a half walls, AKA a one-five-foot wall. It doesn't need five-foot wall requirements. And so we're proposing to codify that with the recommendation of planning commission. We had a public hearing on this, had applied to public, and I do not receive any public comments on it. I still haven't. So due to the safety relation of trying to get safer driveways and safer walls, safer retainment, we also request an emergency clause as well, so we can start enforcing this potentially tomorrow if approved tonight. This will also provide a break as well on applicants and contractors. That is a very common complaint we get about the retain walls having to stay 7.5 feet when they're trying to get their driveway to a flatter grade that we are requiring. We don't allow the retain wall up there. So it should help out both applicant and review staff. Happy to take any questions.
Has the driveway grade been changed, or is it still 12%?
It's 12%, and then there's an administrative variance allowed, or waiver to 14%. If there's something up with the topo that makes a 12% too difficult, then staff can allow it to 14%. But it has not, it has not changed, no.
So a driveway grade that does this number, how does that apply? How does the grade apply to...
Apply to the retain wall?
No, to the driveway, when the driveway does a dip.
You mean it's concave?
What, a U shape?
How does the grade apply to that?
That would probably be a better question for our staff engineer. I've not seen U shape or concave during my time in driveway review. So that would be a neat request that maybe Chris would be better to answer. But I would assume that it would be the driveway grade from the street overall to the house. However, again, he's kind of over that now that we have an engineer, and I have not accounted one in the three years I did GEC reviews. So I'm probably not the best to answer that for you.
Are you talking to Mr. Phil about the transition? Usually it's a flat sole from wherever you're starting out at the edge of the statement, and then you have an angle that goes up, and they don't round those unless you have a, I guess a...
Like a chambers or a burscan?
I mean, to me, the quipper's in grade would be from the street to the, the street to...
Actually, actually, it's the incline of that steepest portion of the driveway, wherever that begins and ends.
Quipper's in grade would be, that would be either down or up.
Yeah.
Either way. So when you have one where this starts at the driveway, it does, does a dip when it goes up, how, how does the grade apply there? Does the grade, does that mean it's not applied, or is it...
It's definitely applied. How it will be applied would probably be up to an engineer. But I would assume that we, we care about the access to the public street, so we definitely want to make sure that that's 12%. And then we really care that they can get into the garage, access to the house safely. So, you know, if it's one of these, like a U, we would probably make sure that both are 12%. But that's just me, you know, guessing. But we definitely care about the street access and access to the home. So probably apply to both angles. I'm not seeing a U-shaped one, though, that's up in here.
I mean, actually, if it's a home, that knows, if it does that number or something, I'm just wondering how the grade would apply.
We could meet, I could meet with the engineer and have that back to you at the work session if I'm asking.
Okay.
What? Any other questions about the retain wall?
Okay, staff, as you mentioned, there's an emergency clause in here, but staff would like it to go to third final, maybe.
I can make a motion to suspend the rules of order. Can we make a motion for the emergency clause to be, right?
You have to, you only do that after you have approval of the ordinance. We'll get there.
That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel on the motion. If you would go to third final.
Sir, just for a second.
Yes.
Yes. Councilmembers Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Waznia.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion with the third and final carrying six to zero. Now we need a motion to...
Maybe you need to read, you need to read your...
I need to read, sir. Amending section 107 and 342, retaining wall placement of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Elveston to modify certain requirements regarding retaining wall setbacks from property lines and regarding terrace retaining walls declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Wilms and Mr. Fowler, roll call.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Waznia.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
And Snow.
Yes.
Motion carrying six, zero. Now would be a motion on emergency clause.
Motion to approve emergency clause. I'd say make, make a motion to approve the emergency clause, second.
That's Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Waznia.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Motion for the emergency clause, pass six to zero. Thank you very much. Next one is an ordinance amending the final plat of Gordon Hollow subdivision and accepting public rights of quiet dedicated therein. And that is another one staff requested going to third and final. Taylor, did you want to address this?
I can give a quick overview. This one is much more simpler than the trail ridge plat you guys approved a few months ago, a couple months ago. It is a new R1 single-family subdivision. It's known as a vertical subdivision. It is creating 13 new R1 single-family lots. They are septic system lots. They all perched with a primary and alternative field for three-bedroomed homes. That's included in your packet. It has passed water inspection. A water line was installed from the developer, and the developer also widened the street two feet total, one foot on each side. It has a code of course for asphaltic shoulder streets. Other than that, drainage infrastructure was also installed, and as well as detention or direction for the drainage of the city crosshorses. So overall infrastructure, we're looking at drainage improvements and the asphalt widening that will be maintained by the city street department if this is approved and accepted by you all. Uniquely, this also has a common property that is being dedicated to the public on the northwest side of Gordon Hollow where the trail runs, subdivision runs through. So it's kind of cool. Our first publicly accessible common property, the hole. It's pretty unique. But other than that, like I said, much more simpler than the trailer bridge one you guys did. I'm happy to take any questions.
Go ahead, Terry. I have a couple of questions. Ms. Taylor. One is the test pits in the general location areas for the primary and secondary bed sites are shown on each of the properties. And those, granted, are not final sites because I'm assuming that they will do some additional soil testing or a design will be done for each of the lots individually by a D R.
Correct. The D Rs, whoever the contractor uses at that time to pull a building permit, they will still need to pull an onsite wastewater management septic permit from the state to give to us at the time of the building permit.
So that will be done really, so that it can be submitted with the building from that location?
Correct. We require that at the time of building.
So that may show some deviation from what the plat shows to what actually occurs in that final design?
There may be some slight minor deviation. The D R is different for the pits you moved. But there were pits that on the site and general alternative area and primary area by D R for this plat.
And, and the pits that were done for the, for the design for the plat, for the plat approval, those are shown on the document itself. Those may be additional pits that the new D R will do when they do the design for the individual site. And I guess my question is, will the primary and secondary areas for the beds in that final design be added and shown on the plat of survey that you get that shows stakeout on the property?
So are you asking, will the file, will the alternative and primary be shown on the clotting we get for the house building permit? Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Another question is, in some areas, the base lot elevation is generally behind the platted area, but in some cases it does approach into and onto the lots of the various parcels of the 13 lots regaled. Will that be a requirement on the plat of survey to show that we, based upon the actual elevations, determine when they survey the lots?
Yes.
Okay. And then this, this question I have is, you said that there's a dedication for that bicycle facility being created as well?
Mm-hmm. We are accepting a public access easement on the northwest side of Gordon Hollow for subdivision with this plat, if we accept it tonight.
Thank, thank you for the developer to do that. And thank you for negotiating that. We're going to make a, make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Well, I think we have to go to third and final first, because you want to say something?
I just wanted to say, you know, Larry's really good with the technical questions because, you know, his background, which I appreciate. I learned a lot from him. But, you know, as far as the city council members concerned, you know, my, my simple question or what I would be wanting me to know is that all the minimum requirements from that as, as per our ordinances laid out by the developer of the plat, and all of those minimum requirements from that, right?
Correct.
And then everything that was on the checklist was, was taken care of that we saw at, on the document that was presented to us for the work session. So a lot of those two things were done, and then we can go.
Yes. Staff is recommending approval and planning commission is recommending approval.
Okay. I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Or you want to make a motion?
Probably more to him.
Go, go ahead, Terry.
The only question I have, and I've been vocal about my concerns with this, is, is Gordon Hollow considered an arterial?
It's, Gordon Hollow is a collector.
Collector.
And then Scottsdale is a sub collector.
So does the city intend to keep the speed limit at 40?
That would be a question for...
Okay. And then as far as getting some kind of signage for hidden drives out there, can we, I'm really terrified. That road driving New West at five o'clock, you can't see it yet. And I'm really worried about people backing out of driveways or if people drive like maniacs down that road. I mean...
Is that a Gordon Hollow?
Yes. It is a racetrack, and that, that's what my concern is. I don't have a problem with the development at all. I think it's just like, Councilman Fowler stated, you know, all the, all the checks have been hit, and you guys did a great job. Thank you for widening the road. It looks great. But I do have safety concerns out there, and anything we can do to mitigate, you know, any kind of problems like that, I think, is the city. I'd like to take a look at either restructuring the speed limit or at least getting, oh, and while I'm thinking about it, the, the road crossing for the trail. I don't know what sets that off, but it flashes at the most inconvenient. I think people are getting to the point where they, they are relying on nobody being in a crosswalk on a flashing light through there. Nobody even slows down anymore. They see the lights and just keep on blazing. So, but that's what I mean, is that I have no qualms about the development. The only thing I do have, Lot 1, I know when I was on planning that we moved the distance, I don't remember if it's driveways from the corner or something, but that's, Lot 1 is the only one that I have a question about, is if the driveway is going to come out on Gordon Hollow, if it's going to come out onto Scottsdale. So, because that one is a very oddly situated with the topography of Gordon Hollow itself, the steepness coming around that curve. The steepness coming around that curve would be, if just the placement of a driveway would be the only concern that I had, is that if somebody's coming out of or whatever, or, you know, is trying to turn left, and somebody's coming up that hill, um, you know, that, that's the, it's always a safety thing with me. That's really the only thing.
Driveways are restricted to Gordon Hollow with this plat. Uh, and of course we have intersection distance requirements. You can set a line right away that will also enforce at the time of the building permit, uh, when we keep access drive so many feet from that intersection, but this plat does restrict access to Gordon Hollow.
Okay, 'cause that's, um, and I didn't know if the applicant was going to get a speed. But that's, and I'll, I'll redress, and that's fine. I just, anyway, I just wanted to make a point of that. I'd, I'd like to see a speed reduction in the sign, or hidden drive signs out there, so please. And, uh, crosswalk corrected. I don't know what that, we need to take a little bit and see if we can get that fixed. Thanks.
I guess our common relatives of white crosswalks that you drive on, just like as you're through from seventy-one going east, there's a number of them there, and as you drive along three forty, you'll find that any number of them may be flashing. It's because someone went through the intersection and it flashes after they cross. And sometimes you don't even see them because they're going off the trail.
Well, I mean, I travel that road sometimes at three or four o'clock in the morning and it'll be flashing. That's why I'm asking.
It's a common complaint, and we've, we've had a regional planning meeting discussing it, that that type of, uh, hill crossing does that, um, so that's why we're looking at new or different kinds, just as a region, just because that seems to be a common complaint.
And there's no predicability.
Will, will deer, will deer set it off? Will deer set it off activated now?
Supposedly...
Sometimes they walk all by themselves.
No, I'm not trying to make a new...
We will definitely take a look, see, yes, with the signs as well, um, see if we do other departments, and then I will get the trails coordinator on that.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in safety.
Yeah, it is an issue. I mean, you know, I drive, that's where I'm going, really, so I can't exactly understand. You know, I don't allow it.
And don't forget our goal in 2038 of no traffic delays. I haven't forgotten that.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend rules in the third and final. Second.
That was Mr. Fowler, Mr. Wazniak, uh, roll call, motion to move the third and final reading to suspend rules.
Suspend the rules. Mm-hmm. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Wazniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Uh, unless there's more discussion, we have a motion to...
No, I agree with you.
Approving the final plat for the Gordon Hollow subdivision and accepting public rights of way dedicated therein.
Motion approved. Second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wazniak, motion to approve the ordinance, proposed ordinance.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Hughes, yes. Wazniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Uh, motion carrying six to zero. Thank you very much. Next one, uh, before I read it, I want to mention that this is one that staff would like move to third and final, and I did, uh, contact Karen out today and, and tell her I didn't think it was necessary for her to be at the meeting because they had started road treatment at three AM this morning, and she explained it at the work session, so I thought we could get by. But let me read it. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Auto Group of Salons Springs in the amount of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars for the purchase of one twenty-twenty-four GMC Sierra twenty-five mountain truck for use by the street department. Is there any discussion?
As you mentioned, we talked about it at work session. Do you have a question about?
No, I was going to go.
Okay, uh, and it's in the budget, so it's all covered. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules in the third and final.
Second. That was Mr. Fowler and Mr. Hansel, and so motion to suspend rules and move to third and final.
Roll call. Oops.
Sorry.
Okay. Roll call vote. Councilmember Wazniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes, yes.
Motion carrying six to zero, now I'll read it for a third time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with Superior Auto Group of Salons Springs in the amount of forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars for the purchase of one twenty-twenty-four GMC Sierra twenty-five mountain truck for use by the street department. Is there a motion to approve?
So, second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Wazniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Wazniak?
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero, yes. Next one is a resolution expressing contentious support and participation of the city Bell Vista and federal command's effective accountable police and criminal justice practices to enhance public trust and public safety program. And, uh, the police chief explained at the work session that this has to do with the LSO program. This is a resolution that we need to pass, uh, every year. The council does if we want to participate in the LSO program. Uh, does anybody have anything that'd like the chief to elaborate on?
Not really. I'd like to talk about, because this is about, uh, following through on presidential direct, right? There was an executive order. Executive order to make the public, not just the city council, but the public aware if the city or the city police department want to acquire any, uh, military... Surplus. Here surplus and any amount, right? Correct. And so what this will do is, council approves, if this is approved, then we'll take the resolution that gets scrapped tomorrow, sent by the mayor, and that'll be submitted to the LSO program manager in the state. And then we will also post, um, what's required by them on the court building and the police building. It's the same building now. We'll put it on our Facebook page and social media indicating that we plan on participating in the program, listing some of the equipment we can get from the program. So it's just, it's just to notify, make sure we have, as the law enforcement agency, we have capital electrical officials approval to do this, as well as the citizens' certification.
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Lot is just going to, is it, though, nevermind? Thank you.
Uh, this is Wazniak and...
Second.
Wazniak and Mr. Fowler.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Wazniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero. Uh, next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with National Auto Fleet Group pursuant to a source wealth cooperative purchasing agreement for the purchase of one twenty-twenty-four Ford F-350 Super Duty truck in the amount of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents for use by the police department. Uh, do I have a brief explanation to you?
Sure, sure, like I, like I did last week for the folks who were here. Um, it's, it's in the budget. It's just purchasing a truck. It's a larger truck, if you're wondering why. It's a F-250. It's a diesel. It's, it's more of a pulling truck. The individual officer I have that, that does a lot of our LSO work for us in that vehicle, uh, and get the equipment that we, we, we get from the different bases around us, we go out with a trailer truck, they haul things back that we get from the LSO program. So the equipment doesn't cost anything. We have to go again ourselves. The current truck he's using is a F-250. Uh, the, the, the streets department that does our maintenance work said if we keep towing with that truck and the capacity that we are towing, we're going to ruin the transmission. It's, it's, it's a very good truck. It's less, fairly low mileage on it. So we're going to move that truck and replace another truck that we need to replace this year, and let that be more of a daily driver, get this larger truck with a use neck attachment to make the towing to support the LSO program to go out, tow our equipment back, so we won't ruin it. But it's already in the budget. It's, it's already in the capital budget.
Do we, do we do enough, uh, I guess hauling that, it would be cheaper to go this route as opposed to contract hauling?
Yeah, yes. I mean, we, we contract haul that one thing before, uh, our, our large armored vehicle, and it costs a lot. So, so, yeah, it would be cheaper, just, just, and if this is a diesel, those who have driven diesels, it'll last three hundred thousand miles. It'll last a long time. So this, this vehicle will be a slow ride.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Wazniak. I'll roll, roll vote.
Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. And Wazniak?
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the sale or exchange of two surplus city vehicles currently owned by the city and leased to the recycling center, waiving competitive bidding related to a sale and for other purposes. And I noticed Ken is here for the recycling center. Did you want to say a couple words about that?
Well, there's a process. We, we've been... Yeah, the, the process is our vehicles come to us via the city, via county grants, and I want to thank you upfront, we got the, the twenty-twenty-three in service, which allows us to, to facilitate the resurrection of one of the vehicles that we're asking about. And the way the process works, I mean, in historic terms, they go off to auction possibly, but any of the revenue that comes back from sale of those vehicles comes back to the foundation. Okay, so I suggested to Karen that we just exchange for nominal dollar transition of title so that those vehicles could just get moved out of your surplus inventory into ours. Our intentions are to restore our thirteen with a rebuild on it and sell the two thousand eight in question to finance the rebuild. So that's, and then it's a lot cleaner as far as facilitating the disposal of the vehicles. So that's what I could add to that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, and, and, you know, to the city's point of view, it, it doesn't make any difference financially, so.
We're, we're just an intermediary for doing some of their business, but not from ours, we were close to. Motion to approve the second. Oops, sorry.
That was, uh, Mr. Wilms and Mr. Wazniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Wazniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of Mark Felton to a position under the three advisory board to fill in the non-expire term, indeed, May one, twenty-twenty-four. And, um, Mark did come to our work session and, and speak to the folks for a couple minutes and submitted a resume. Yes, Larry?
Yeah, I think, I think he's going to be an excellent candidate with his background in enforcement work in what the state was earlier. Um, we want this for a very short time. We'll be, uh, doing a reappointment to that position probably in our interim meeting. I don't think it'll, because the expiration date first, so I would strongly consider suggesting, if he's willing, Mr. Mayor, that we would consider that reappointment at that time.
He said he would.
So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
That was Mr. Hansel and Mr. Fowler, uh, roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Wazniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
And Fowler?
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero. Uh, resolution age, we've already taken care of, so I'll move on to resolution I authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a sublease agreement with the Bell Vista Friends of Life Security regarding space in the library for the Encore bookstore. And, uh, this came up at the work session. Uh, our attorney, Jason Kelly, explained that, uh, it was just to make clear, you know, the relationships as they're, uh, using space in the library. Thought it was proof that ever lease reflected that. And also highlighted some of the new library laws that are being passed and litigated and whatnot.
Motion approved, second.
Miss, that's Mr. Wazniak and Mr. Fowler. I'll roll, roll vote.
Councilmember Wazniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
And Hughes, yes.
Uh, resolution carrying six to zero. Next one is a resolution indicating authorizing dispersing officers and municipal depository board of the city Bell Vista for calendar year twenty-twenty-four, and, uh, the names are indicated, uh, and these are the same, uh, folks that we had last year.
And the important part of this, this is manual action of, of the council to, to establish the dispersing officers and deposit, repository board. Uh, it's a manual function that this council has. And, uh, for the dispersing officers, there are four listed. Uh, Mayor Protam follows our mayor, uh, in the line of action, then the city clerk, then the police chief, and then Councilman Wazniak, or the four conditional dispersing officers. So if one of them should happen to not be here and we need a check signed or approved, uh, they would be able to do that, so we continue our financial business regardless of who's not here, and that's the priority. The other part of it is that the, the depository board addresses the locations where we financially do our dealings, um, as I understand, and the mayor, the finance director, and Councilman Fowler, the three that are listed for that, uh, all of them are good choices.
Motion approved, second.
That's Mr. Wazniak and Mr. Hansel.
Roll call vote. Uh, Councilmember Hughes, yes. Wazniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
And Snow?
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero. Next one is a res, uh, resolution amending the twenty-twenty-three city budget to recognize five hundred and eighty thousand in development impact fee revenue to impact fee restricted returns and amending the twenty-twenty-four city budget to appropriate impact fee qualifying expenses for the library and police department. And, uh, we had some discussion during the work session about the expenses for the police, and, uh, once again, I, I, uh, mentioned to Suzanne at the library that she didn't necessarily have to attend, and she, it was a relatively minor matter. She described it in the work session.
Motion approved, second. Any second. Second.
That's Mr. Wazniak and Mr. Fowler. I'll roll, roll vote.
Councilmembers Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Hansel?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. And Wazniak?
Yes.
Motion carrying six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Blue Guys IT through the inter-local purchasing system program TIPS, and the total amount of seventy-three thousand, five oh four twenty cents for the purchase of total security solution to enhance city cybersecurity efforts. And this was, uh, in John Mokel's area and, uh, was budgeted for, and expecting expense that we've gone over with us in the past, so any more discussion?
Motion approved, second.
That's Mr. Wazniak and Mr. Fowler, uh, roll... That's Mr. Wazniak and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hughes.
Yes.
Wazniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
And Snow.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Uh, next one is resolution M, setting the time for meetings of the city council. And this leaves the work sessions at five thirty PM and proposes that the meetings start in the next month. The city council meetings be at six PM rather than six thirty. And, uh, this was an initiative that, uh, some of the employees asked about because of having to wait around for the meeting. And on the other hand, we didn't want to make it too early because of, uh, we want citizens to have time to get here. So, uh, looking at the times for regular meetings, I had found four cities, one, I got over these a few months ago, four cities have it at six PM, three happen at six thirty, and one has it at five fifty. So we felt like we could go to six PM and people could still get here, but we were a little reluctant to push it any earlier than that. So that was the idea. Either way, we're kind of in the strike zone of what other people do.
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it was, uh, you know, employees had to come to the meetings and show up and do their thing. You know, if it's thirty minutes earlier, they can be home with their families, then that's all better. So I, I don't have a problem at all.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's Mr. Wazniak and Mr. Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
And Wazniak.
Yes.
Uh, motion carried six to zero. Um, a few announcements. I want to add one that's not on the list, and that is tomorrow at six PM at, uh, the, the rec center, which used to be known as Ruten Hall. There's going to be a meeting. Uh, the police chief and I will be there discussing the, uh, public meeting. We'll be discussing the proposed, uh, police billage, one half bill increase, which is on the ballot March five. The other meetings, our next city council work session is five thirty PM Tuesday, February twenty at the police training room. Next, regular city council meeting, six thirty PM Monday, February twenty-six at Belavista District Court. Planning commission work session is four thirty PM Thursday, February one at Belavista District Court. Planning commission regulating is four thirty PM Monday, February twelve at Belavista District Court. Political instruction appeals is three PM Tuesday, February thirteen, if necessary, at fire station number four conference room. And that's at sixteen thirty-nine. Four is still to go.
So maybe you change the meeting plan a little bit?
Yes, sir.
Can you leave it at six o'clock now because of the resolution?
That's, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
A very, very special.
Mayor, I hear you're ready to adjourn. I, I, I'd just like to take, I mean, just, just a brief minute. Uh, you know, as city council members, we, we're, you know, we're, we're greatly restricted in interaction that we can have with each other due to the FOIA laws in Arkansas, which we, Arkansas, uh, interprets FOIA to a stricter level than most states do throughout the country. So although we are restricted in having interaction with each other, we still do get to know each other on a personal level. Particularly at work sessions, we'll be around the table and, you know, everything is in so formal and we're not voting on things. Or we go down to the Arkansas Municipal League in Little Rock a couple times a year. That gives us an opportunity to get to know each other as well. Uh, and so we have some new members and I don't know if they've had quite the opportunity that I did or, or Larry or, or maybe Jim. But, you know, we had the opportunity to get to know Steve very, really well. And I was able to, you know, meet his wife on, on several occasions as well. She's just a sweetheart. And they also, so they have Casey, the daughter that, that John announced this morning that passed away today. They also have another daughter. Uh, I think a joy for them, I think, thankfully, is that they, this, the other daughter just had a new baby in January, just before Casey passed away. So it kind of took the, took the, knocked the air out of me a little bit because I did not know prior to John announcing that. I knew that Casey was ill, uh, and I knew that it was really serious, but I didn't know that it had happened this morning. So I, I speak for myself, but I think also for the members of the council, that our hearts are broken for this family. Um, I have two daughters as well. And they have two daughters and of course, I know we all have children. So I just want you to know that our, our prayers for peace and comfort for Steve and Jenny and the daughter who we raised, uh, we're with you and begging, we pray for you for, for peace. So we're really, really sorry.
Thank you for that. Okay, uh, I'll, I'll adjourn. Thank you.